Call to order the planning commission meeting for Thursday, February 16, 2023. Please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Kroll, would you please go to the room?
Yeah. Commissioner Knoblock.
Here.
Commissioner Heikala.
Here.
Commissioner Bradley.
Here.
Commissioner Casey.
Here.
Commissioner Schmoki.
Here.
Commissioner Geisler.
Here.
And Chair Schwartz.
Here. Thank you. Our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Geisler, second by Schmoki. Any corrections, additions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the agenda is adopted. Next, we have the approval of our January 19, 2023 minutes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Heikala.
I move to approve the minutes from the January 19, 2023 meeting.
Did I jump on somebody? Motion by Heikala, second by Knoblock. Any additions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? And the minutes are approved. All right, our first order of business this evening is Planning Case 23-3, a comprehensive plan amendment for Norbella Senior Living at 3011 124th Avenue. Rachel Development, Mr. Kroll.
All right. Good evening, Commission. So tonight, I'm actually going to, in my staff presentation, touch on both Case 23-3 and 23-4 together, but then we'll still do the separate public hearing and discussion for each of those cases. But it just felt, for the information that I'd like to share, it feels a little bit easier to kind of bring it all together into one presentation, and then we can kind of separate out the discussion. So first, I just want to give a project overview of the proposal, then I'll go into the comprehensive plan amendment piece of that, and then into the planned unit development piece. So here, the applicant is looking to build a 40-unit assisted living and, or senior assisted living and memory care facility at 3011 124th Ave. That site does currently zone general commercial and is guided as commercial in our comprehensive plan. And really, these two cases together is that the commercial designation just doesn't currently allow an assisted living use. So there's the request for a comprehensive plan amendment to guide the site from commercial to commercial mixed use to address that future land use designation, and then a request for a planned unit development to allow for better flexibility to address that current zoning. So these in tandem would then allow an assisted living use at the site. As you'll notice in the application, the, both the comprehensive plan amendment and the PUD are going to include the lots that you see here on the screen. So it's Lot 1, Lot 2, Lot 2A, and Lot 2B. And that was part of a previously approved plat with the Metro Storage facility there on Lot 1. And so Metro Storage would continue to own Lot 1, 2A, and 2B, and then Norbella Senior Living would own Lot 2. There is, the applicant is working with Metro Storage on a shared maintenance agreement, so that Lot 2A and 2B currently house stormwater ponding and infrastructure for both Lot 1 and Lot 2. So there'd be a kind of a shared maintenance agreement on that. And I think, given the kind of coordination of these lots, staff wanted to include all of these lots together in the comprehensive plan amendment and PUD, I think for just better kind of long-range planning coordination, given kind of some of the shared maintenance with these sites. So as we're going through this presentation, we are talking about all four of these lots that you see here on the screen. This is just a quick view, aerial view from Google Maps, kind of looking east off of Main Street, so you can see the existing Metro self-storage in the foreground, the current vacant lot, and then you see some single-family homes in our LDR 2 district there in the background. And here's just a view from 124th Ave looking north, and you can kind of see Menards and our commercial uses here in the background. I'm going to go into more detail of the site plan in the PUD section. This is really just to kind of give you an idea of where it would sit on the site. They are proposing a surface parking lot. The main access would be off of 124th Ave with no access on Main Street. And then they do propose sidewalk around the entire facility, as well as providing a sidewalk connection along 124th Ave that the city would then eventually have to fill in kind of the gap to bring it from this site down to, is it Northdale, I think, at the intersection there? Let's see. So the Norbella Senior Living is, would provide a higher level of care that you might otherwise see at more independent senior living facilities. And so they're proposing 24 units of assisted living, and then 16 units of that memory care that you can see on the screen. Some of the services that would be provided are really based on the individual needs of the residents living there, but could include different health and mobility assessments, medical reviews, medication management, bathing and hygiene assistance, and various mobility programming. Norbella would be licensed as an assisted living with dementia care facility under Minnesota Department of Health Section 144G, and Great Lakes Management would maybe be the onsite management there for the facility. Each of the units is about 380 square feet with a full bathroom, ADA-compliant shower, cable internet connection, countertop microwave, a sink, a small refrigerator, and then kind of personal dining area with 24-hour emergency response system. So each of those units is really a studio-style kind of unit and intended for single occupancy. And then there's also a number of building amenities, a full commercial kitchen and community dining room with meal plan service for residents at the facility, a beauty salon, wireless internet, and different wellness programming on the site. There's kind of different lounge areas and activity centers in the building. There's also a patio out here for residents that connects to that walking path and sidewalk around the facility. And then there is a secured patio with a proposed pergola for the memory care wing. I keep my mouse there. So really, the memory care wing would have secure access for staff and guests, and then there is this kind of individual garden patio area that's secured for residents living there. This is kind of a typical floor plan, and then an image that I took from Norbella's website to kind of give you an idea of the layout of those rooms. Again, you're seeing the full kind of ADA-compliant bathroom, and then that countertop with sink, some cabinets for storage, and then a small refrigerator there, kind of give you an idea of the units. These are some other images provided by the applicant, so just kind of just to give you an idea of the interior. I believe this is from their Centerville location, so you can kind of see that community dining room, and there's a fireplace kind of off of the lobby there, and some ideas of some of those kind of lounge activity areas in the hallways of the facility. So it's kind of an overview of the project as a whole. So now, looking at the comprehensive plan amendment piece of this, as I mentioned earlier, the current commercial, future land use designation would not permit an assisted living facility use, and so this amendment would designate Lots 1, 2, 2A, 2B to commercial mixed use. I guess I'll note, I do have a letter from Metro Storage that I can share with you all during the public hearing, sharing their support. I know that Rachel Development and Norbella have been working closely with Metro Storage on this coordination with that shared maintenance agreement, and there really wouldn't be an impact at all to the existing Metro Storage facility that's existing there. So when looking at a comprehensive plan amendment, the Commission and the Council are asked to consider the following: the effect of the amendment on the public health, safety, order, convenience, and general welfare; the effect of the amendment on present and potential surrounding land uses; and whether or not the amendment is conforming with our city comprehensive land use plan and any other policies around development. So this is the future land use designations as they exist today. So again, you see currently designated commercial, and then you see the low-density residential to the south of the site. I think one of the themes that you saw from the applicant's narrative, and I think part of our staff analysis, is that we really see this as an opportunity to create a buffer in transition zone from some lower-density residential uses to maybe some higher-intensity commercial uses. So with this, you're kind of going from single-family homes to slightly larger kind of quasi-commercial residential facility into that high-intensity commercial uses. Staff felt that there weren't any concerns around the effect of the public health, safety, order, convenience, or general welfare. Here, the site has been zoned and used for commercial purposes. This proposed amendment would provide options for that kind of quasi-commercial and quasi-residential use, and again, creates a buffer between high-intensity commercial uses and low-density residential uses. Looking at the present and potential surrounding land uses, we felt that this would be compatible. We see that current land uses, you know, include commercial to the north and west, low-density residential to the east and south. This future land use designation also promotes those commercial uses to continue on the north and west, and to continue to use low-density residential on the east and south. And this, really, this future land use designation would allow for more residential-like uses to be located next to existing residential neighborhoods, including the proposed assisted living facility. And then I kind of mentioned earlier, the Metro Storage is a conditional use in our general commercial district. It has an approved conditional use permit back from Planning Case 19-7 and 19-8. So again, no impact here on Metro Storage. It can still be a self-storage facility by right with this change. And then looking at the comprehensive plan, staff do believe that there is policy support in our 2040 plan for this change. It's currently zoned commercial, but it's not identified as a specific focus area for commercial development, looking at one of our maps there, Map 2-3 in our plan. And given that Coon Rapids is a pretty much fully-developed community, a lot of our land use policies do need to focus on redevelopment priorities, changes to residential densities, and infill development, that we feel like this proposal aligns with those goals. And we outlined a couple of land use and housing policies there that directly align with this proposal. So all in all, staff felt that it met those three criteria for the change. Then just to go into the planned unit development piece of this, again, the general, or the current commercial zoning would not permit an assisted living facility use. PUD would designate Lots 1, 2, 2A, and 2B into a PUD, and staff did evaluate some alternative pathways, like including rezoning that parcel to high-density residential, but ultimately determined that it could run into issues related to setbacks and lot coverage, some of the parking items, because it's really kind of geared towards independent senior living. So just didn't really feel like there would, could be a path there. You know, maybe longer term, we look at allowing assisted living facilities as a permitted or conditional use in our commercial zoning districts, but again, felt like that was maybe something a little bit more involved and kind of long-term to think about. And so we determined that the PUD would really be the best fit. And ultimately, while we haven't maybe seen a new PUD in a couple of years, it is a tool in our toolkit, I think, for cases like this to allow greater creativity and flexibility in site plan design, for something that maybe doesn't fit quite neatly in our zoning code. So looking at the PUD, there's kind of these five criteria that we're looking at. If it's consistent with the intent of a PUD in our zoning code, if it meets the conditional use standards, each stage of the development can exist as an independent unit, the area surrounding the plan is compatible, and that the plan exceeds zoning district standards for uses kind of similar to the proposed use. So looking at the site plan, just wanted to cover a few items here in detail. Looking at the site area and building coverage, so the whole, kind of all four of those lots, I believe is just a little over six and a half acres. The specific lot where the Norbella project would go is 2.2 acres. The building coverage for our general commercial district standards is a 40% building coverage, and here it'd be at 31% building coverage. Looking at the setback, the main setback to think about for a PUD is that it has to be 25 feet from the kind of exterior boundary of the PUD, which this project complies with. Looking at some of the circulation items, first with vehicle circulation. They would enter and exit off of 124th Ave into the parking area. Individuals living at the facility would not have vehicles, so the parking is really only for guests and employees of the site. The applicant has supported similar projects that have been adequately served with 30 parking stalls, and here they're proposing 34 parking stalls. Again, looking at some of the pedestrian circulation, there's sidewalk around the facility for employees, guests, and residents of the assisted living facility to walk on site. And again, that secured patio area for employees, guests, and residents of the memory care unit. They would provide a connection to public sidewalk along 124th Ave, and we would eventually need to construct sidewalk from in front of the Metro Storage to Northdale Boulevard. And the city did actually collect an escrow from Metro Storage back when I think you all approved the plat and the site plan for that project, to construct a future sidewalk in front of their site. They do provide a bike rack on site. They do have a trash enclosure that would meet our standards. It has those three sides of matching building materials, and then a durable gate as its fourth side. And then they are proposing a monument sign along 124th Ave that would require a separate permit and approval from the Planning Department. Their landscape standards do exceed our minimum standard that we set, and would propose 21 overstory trees, 27 ornamental trees, 15 evergreen trees, and then 600 shrubs and perennials is a good mix. And then there's also existing trees and landscaping around those stormwater facilities that'll help improve the overall PUD for the Metro Storage site as well as this site. Looking at some of the elevations in building materials, be a mix of materials and colors, including stone, board and batten siding, and steel shake siding. Every wall of the building is staggered to help create some varying massing along its facades. You'll see that there's some gable ornamentation as well above some of the windows and doorways, and that the entry up to the building creates a focal point with an, and is emphasized with a portico and some additional windows. So this is an elevation that you'd see kind of from the existing single-family homes in the neighborhood. So really kind of thinking of this as like a large rambler, essentially. I think the height of the building at the entrance is 24 feet, but otherwise elsewhere, it's 22 feet and nine inches kind of from the ground to the tallest roof peak. This would be an elevation from Main Street, so this is kind of the windows and doors that were off of that community dining facility that would open up onto the kind of back patio there. So if you're kind of driving, I guess, westbound along Main Street, this is kind of what you would see there. And then again, that main entrance just kind of highlighting some additional details and creating a focal point for the facility. This was a rendering provided by the applicant to just kind of give you an idea of the different colors and materials of the building, and this is looking east from the Metro Storage facility at the site. There is a link here, I think I forwarded it all to you, that was kind of an aerial view of another project that they're recently completed. So again, that kind of gives you an idea, very similar footprint of what the building would look like and how it'd be laid out on the site. So here's our, kind of going back to those standards of approval for a PUD. Again, we felt like as staff that this met those standards. It's consistent with the general commercial district standards, and again, offers some greater creativity and flexibility on a couple of items. It does meet our conditional use standards, which I do have in the staff report, but I didn't want to go through all of those here, but happy to answer any questions about those. Both Metro Storage and Norbella would continue to exist as independent units. Again, we've talked a lot about kind of creating that transition or buffer zone from higher-intensity commercial uses and lower-density residential uses. And again, kind of, there were some flexibilities given or related to the use and some setbacks in parking there, but that a PUD is meant to kind of be used for. So we'd be asking the Planning Commission to recommend approval of the proposed comprehensive plan amendment based on the findings you see here on the screen, and then afterwards, if there is a recommendation for approval of the comp plan amendment, we would then be asking a recommend approval for the proposed PUD, and we list a couple of conditions there as well. So I know that was a lot of information. There's kind of a lot there, so happy to help answer any questions. We do have representatives from Rachel Development here as well to help answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Kroll. Commissioner, any questions for Mr. Kroll?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, Mr. Kroll, this has a lot of the same features that a site plan that we might see would have. You give us all the elevations and the landscaping. Is that what we're looking at when we consider a PUD?
Yeah, yeah. A PUD kind of really acts as the site plan approval, and so it's really kind of a tool there to be used, again, when something maybe doesn't fit quite neatly in our zoning code and we're allowing some greater creativity or flexibility on the site plan itself. And then I guess maybe the trade-off with that or just something to think about with a PUD, and Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, but you know, in the future, if on Lot 1, a use that wasn't a self-storage facility wanted to go there, or on Lot 2, a use that wasn't an assisted living facility use wanted to develop there, it would require an amendment and approval from the Planning Commission and City Council. So this, you know, the trade-off to some of that flexibility is, is it kind of locks in those uses at the site.
So we're, we won't see a site plan, per se?
Yeah, this is the site plan with it. So yeah, I wouldn't go through like a separate site plan review.
Yeah, that's what I was wondering.
Yeah, the PUD.
I mean, we got all the information we usually see.
Yep. Yeah, so this, yeah, the PUD approval here would kind of act as the site plan approval and wouldn't require a separate site plan approval.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Mr. Kroll at this time?
Did you, one more thing. Did you say that there's going to be more buffer trees put in between, you know, before you get to Lot 2A and 2B and those single fam, or those quad homes or duplexes? Is there going to be more of a buffer there?
Yeah, so the, they do provide some additional landscaping beyond our minimum to kind of help with the buffer, but then I think some of my comments around the buffer were more kind of generally with this use, kind of thinking about going from, you know, a single-family home to this project that's a little bit bigger of kind of a larger single-family home than going into the higher-intensity commercial uses. So we felt like this, this kind of project acts as a nice buffer, I think, from those low-density residential homes to the kind of higher-intensity commercial that you see at Riverdale Village and kind of the surrounding area, if that makes sense.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions at this time?
Chair Schwartz.
Commissioner Knoblock.
I have a question for Mr. Kroll. To my recollection, in previous times, there was so much issue about the filtration ponds in Lot 2A and 2B. I wanted to, is there any more information in regards to Metro Storage and Norbella sharing that output? Because with, there's like three or four residents that are just below that, and that was the prior issue before with development, and that I just wanted to see if you had any more information to share or content in regards to that, for the filtration basin on 2A, 2B.
Yeah, I guess I don't have any additional kind of plans for it. I know Norbella is working with Metro Storage. I think they're drafting the kind of maintenance agreement right now, so I think maybe the applicants might be able to speak to some additional details around that, but there wasn't like any additional kind of plans or like changes that I'm aware of to that existing ponding with the project.
Yeah, because I'm not looking for engineering comments or blueprints or anything, but a general overview of what kind of filtration, what the general thought plan is regards that, because I know that's the only thing I can see of any possible concern or issue possibly arising out of that.
Sure. Yeah, I think, yeah, if, David, you might be able to speak to that a little bit at some point too, with addressing questions.
Either or. You can come up now, because I was not going to ask for the petitioner's comments anyway. Give your name and address for the record, please.
Thank you, Chair. Members of the Commission, David Stratman, I'm with Rachel Development on behalf, we're with Vincent Development, our partner. We're the applicant on behalf of Norbella Senior Living, and I live at 7645 Paris Court in Atsego, Minnesota. Dakota did a wonderful job of kind of really detailing and going through everything. The, to your question, Commissioner Knoblock, on the stormwater, Metro Storage had to construct that infiltration basin. So it's an infiltration basin 1, so which means most of the time it's going to be dry. So it's made to take the water, and it infiltrates into the ground. And they, through the watershed district, they had to create a whole stormwater management plan for both the lot they built their building on and this lot. And the design of that infiltration basin was designed for more impervious surface on this lot than what we are proposing. It was, so it's, in effect, it's overbuilt for what our building and their building combined would create as far as stormwater runoff. Our application also included a full stormwater management plan that dovetailed on the Metro Storage management plan. It's also gone to Coon Creek Watershed. All of that has been processed. So the stormwater is actually, it's more robust than it needs to be based on what we're proposing as far as the use of this lot. Metro Storage planned for more intensity on this lot and overbuilt the stormwater based on that. So we're actually coming in at less creation of stormwater runoff, and it all goes into that basin.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the detail and that information.
As long as you're there, is there anything else you want to add to the presentation?
Sure. A couple of things, Chair. When we were here at the work session a number of weeks ago, I recall there was, and I believe it was this commissioner on this end, is it Geisler? Okay. You had asked about ambulance and emergency services to a facility like this, and I wanted to come back and make sure I answered that question. So I talked to our operator, Great Lakes Management, and we have several of these facilities, and we actually average less than one ambulance call per month to our facilities, and they almost never have their sirens going. It's just not. Because again, the thing that we've talked about always anecdotally is, these folks are in your community, and if our facility isn't available, they're probably at home, and they might be by themselves or being cared for by a loved one that doesn't have the training. And so now, they're in a facility where their medication, medication- And so now, they're in a facility where their medication is managed, their nourishment is managed, they have assistance in bathing and whatever needs they have, and their health and their mobility is assessed on a consistent basis. So, from an anecdotal standpoint, you can say, okay, if these 40 folks were on their own in the community, there's more chance for accidents or needs for emergency services than there are in a facility like this in a controlled environment where they've got assistance 24 hours a day. And that bears out in our, in our information relative to our operations where we have one, you know, less than one, on average, less than one ambulance call a month to our facilities. So, I think that bodes well for it. There was another question, I recall at the work session, relative to, if you look on the site plan, is the, does it mouse? Do I have to press it or not? There we go. Okay. So, you've got the patio area here, that's for the assisted living area. So, the memory care is secure to make sure those folks are safe. And then, the storm pond is down in this area. This is Lot 2A and 2B over here. And there was some concern of the slope into the pond from the patio. And the slope actually off of the patio in this area is a five-to-one slope, so five feet out, one feet of drop. Compared to the city's path along Main, right here to the north of the site, it's a three-to-one slope. So, a three-to-one slope is a mowable slope. You can run a lawnmower on that slope. So, five-to-one is even much more gradual. So, it's really, it's not much of a, it's not a hazard at all. It's very walkable, it's safe. And again, since it's an infiltration basin, most of the time, that's a dry pond. It's a dry basin. There's not gonna be any hazards at the bottom of it. So, other than that, I think, that's the questions that I recall from the work session and then on the stormwater specifically. If there's any other questions for us, but again, I think Dakota covered everything very well, so we're just, we ask for your support.
Any questions from the commission at this time?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, just to clarify, on the east side of the property there, you're just relying on your landscaping to be the screener buffer, so no fencing or anything like that would be proposed with this? It would just be the shrubs and trees?
Correct, yes. And as Dakota alluded to, the elevation of our building, it's a one-story rambler, slab-on-grade building. To the neighbors in those twin homes, the height of those twin homes is probably similar to this building. Now, this building is obviously bigger, but from a massing standpoint, from what it looks like, it's just a big rambler next to them.
Sure. And Mr. Chair, if I may. So, mentioning slab-on-grade's a great example. Obviously, these folks are a little less mobile. What is the emergency weather plan for a facility like this? So, tornado shelter, that kind of thing?
You've got, you've got, all of that is ADA compliant. It's all, it all meets all of the requirements, the licensing requirements from the state. I don't know those details specifically, but, you know, the floor plans and the layout and the doorways, all of it, and it's all fairly recent new codes with the state. And I know that our architects and our operations have been through great detail with state and county regulators on the operation of this facility and it's fully compliant in all of those places. And each facility is licensed independently by the state. We have, you know, repetition with the floor plan and everything else, but it's gone through with a fine-tooth comb at that level.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, you're saying that like your doorways to your rooms are extra wide, so the bed could fit through there, that kind of thing? And just offhand, what are the size of the beds that are provided?
The facilities, we make the individual room doorways, we actually have started to make them bigger. They're wide enough for a hospital bed to be pushed through them.
Is that the kind of bed that's there?
No, you would have a standard bed. The resident would be able to move their own bed furniture in if they wanted to, but then if they get into a situation where they really need the adjustability and the, you know, the safeties of a hospital bed, one can be, you know, moved in and they can be wheeled in and out through the door, they fit through the door.
They fit through the doors, okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
So, going along with Commissioner Casey, then the, whatever the EMT or the ambulance people would need to get into a room to move a guest out, or, you know, if they had a hospital call or whatever, they obviously then could get through and would be totally accessible for them.
Yep, for sure. And they would have, obviously, full and complete cooperation from our staff onsite. We've got nurses and para professionals onsite and doctors are there frequently. So, again, the health and welfare of the residents of the community is at the forefront all through the process.
Thank you.
All right, we may have more questions for you later.
Okay, thanks.
All right, at this time, I will open a public hearing in planning case 23-3. First, the comprehensive plan amendment for Norbella Senior Living at 3011124th Avenue. Anyone who wants to speak to the public hearing? Please come with a microphone, give your name and address for the record and limit your comments to three minutes.
Hello, my name is Glenn Anderson. I live at 298124th Ave. I'm one of the twin homes that'll be directly next to that. Just some basic questions. I'm not here to speak against or in favor of it. I guess this is the first time I've heard of it, so other than the letter we received. Most of the neighbors I've talked to seem pretty open to the idea of this development because they feel it'd be better for less traffic than, say, a commercial business would be. A couple of questions, however, you were mentioning sidewalks. Are you talking sidewalks on the north side of 124th? The reason I bring that up is because when they rebuilt 124th Avenue to do, for development years ago, they took away about 15 feet of our front yard and they talked about putting a sidewalk in at that time. And at the time, they basically took our driveways, all of our driveways, and cut them down by half. And when I asked the city council at that time, are we, what of our driveway can we still use? And they said, well, you cannot park on the part, the section of the driveway that intersected with our sidewalk, which basically left us with no place to use our driveway. So, that's a concern I have there. The other question would be, I'm having a hard time telling because it's kind of a fuzzy picture to me, but what is the gap between the east side of the structure and the twin homes? Or maybe the border, I should say. It's kind of, it's a very fuzzy picture for me to look at here, so. And you say there will be trees there as a buffer? Will there be sidewalks around the building as well? Or sidewalks going around perhaps the back toward the drainage pond? Kind of that kind of thing?
Mr. Kroll, can you answer those?
Yeah, I can speak to some of that here, yeah. So, just looking at the question about the sidewalk in terms of the public piece of it, I did talk with our city engineer just to kind of get a better understanding. And 124th Ave is identified in our sidewalk plan to have sidewalk on both sides of the street, but I know it's, felt like we were no longer gonna put sidewalk in front of the twin homes, is my understanding. So, the piece that's proposed on the Norbella site comes down in front of that secured patio. I know it is really hard to see on this image. It comes down and then would go west towards the Metro Self-Storage, so wouldn't actually go in front of the Norbella property and then would not go in front of the twin homes that are there. So, yeah, it would just kind of come down right here and create a little kind of L-piece that eventually, we could put something in front of Metro Storage and connect it down to Northdale. The structure itself here would be, is 25 feet from the property line. So, then depending on how far the twin home is from that property line, I'm not sure. Maybe, my guess is maybe it's 10 or 15 feet. So, that's kind of separation there. And then, this is their landscape plan. So, there would be a sidewalk around the building there and then some trees and shrubbery kind of between that sidewalk and where the twin homes would be.
That looks pretty nice, really.
Yeah, so yeah.
What about the drainage pond? Would they, would they eventually put a sidewalk or maybe a walkway, nature walk around that? Not that there's much nature there now, it's just a hole, but, you know, it could eventually have water, you know? So.
Yeah, that isn't part of this proposal. I'm not sure if that is something that could be feasible in the future, just given the design of the stormwater pond. But, yeah, as part of this proposal, there wouldn't be any kind of trail or anything around the stormwater pond.
You know, the one thing that is just realized too, is that being there is no road or access on the east side of the structure. I remember before, they were talking about anything that would go there would have to have a road for fire access, that sort of thing, you know, a perimeter road around the building. Is that no longer a concern? I mean, that would take up all your, obviously take up all of your green space, but, you know, from the point of view of, if you had a fire, your only access for the fire department is really in the parking lot. And then they'd have to work around the rest of it with hoses, what have you. Is that a concern at all, or?
Yeah, I don't know if you recall, I remember talking with our fire chief and I know he had shared maybe just some thoughts on that, but I know part of our engineering comments are just to get a truck turning template, but it seems doable that a truck can, would really kind of just pull in there probably and more than likely just need to back out afterwards or, you know, came to be, there wouldn't be any cars here, people could move their cars, they might have to drive over the median here and then we might just have to replace some landscaping in that rare case, but it.
Yeah, hopefully they never need it, but you never know. Well, the final, well, I got, last questions I have really is, as far as the drainage pond goes, or whatever you want to call it, I guess. You have basically land coming on the, I guess it'd be the, where 124th makes the curve, you have a strip of land right there, then it comes back around. At one time, they were talking about putting a road in there, an access road. It would be, it would skirt the east side and the north side of the pond and then come into this, looks like that's out here, 'cause it wouldn't be nowhere for a road to go. But, I guess what I'm wondering is, I don't know if you're aware of it or not, but I did see a deal on the Coon Rapids website about, I believe it was a 2030 or 2040 plan. And basically, on that plan, our houses are gone. Are you aware of that? It shows us not being there anymore. It's been rezoned, commercial. So, I'm wondering what, how does that affect us in the long run? Are we gonna wake up one day and say, you're out of here? Or, I mean, what's going on there? And at the last meeting, when they redid and they put the pond in, they said that the remaining strip of land that the twin homes are on was no longer wide enough for development. So, I took that to mean that we're not likely going anywhere anytime soon, or even in the future. But then I saw the 2030 plan, which shows us not being there. So, I mean, I guess I'm wondering, I know this is probably the wrong venue, but I mean, it's kind of conflicting story there, so, from what I was told.
That's not part of our evaluation here this evening.
I wonder if that would be more of a county thing than maybe, for that? I mean, so, well, basically, I guess I would say what I've seen here seems pretty, pretty nice, really. I mean, it's better than having a gas station or a quickie mark of some sort where there's tons of traffic coming and going. My neighbors, now just for one last question, I'm having, is this the entrance right here or my finger is? Is there just one entrance in and out, right there?
The entrance is here.
No, I'm talking the road, the road.
Oh, the road entrance, yeah, that's.
Is there more than one or just the one?
Just that one.
Okay, does that intersect with the intersection?
It does.
Okay. That neighbor may give you some grief because he was pretty irritated before the idea of him now living on a, basically a four-way busy intersection. And so, but then again, I guess he's not here to say anything anyway, so, you know. So.
And this development is not gonna provide an awful lot of traffic.
I don't get that impression, no. I mean, we were surprised how little even the self-storage place, how much that changed. So, I mean, so, you know, 124th is becoming a busier road all the time, but the self-storage place didn't really change anything, so we're pretty happy about that. But, I guess that's all I had to ask. I just, I wanted, primarily, I wanted to find out the sidewalk because before, when they mentioned they were gonna put sidewalks after they rebuilt the road, and they said, well, we're taking your driveway away, you can't use it. And then I said, well, the only choice you have is to buy us out. And all of a sudden, they went back and reevaluated and they figured it would cost a million and something plus to buy all those six homes. So, they eliminated sidewalks. So, I guess this hasn't changed, so.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, thank you. Oh, can I get a copy of that by chance, the picture of this?
Yeah. Yeah, it's up on our website there and I can, maybe after the.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and limit comments on this case to just the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey.
So, I just want to say, with respect to the comprehensive plan and the adjustment that we're making here, I think not only does it, you know, meet the minimum standard, I think it actually forwards the intent of those sections and enhances them with what we currently have here. So, for, you know, in that case, I would, I would move approval in planning case 23-3 with the findings that are listed in our packet.
Second. Motion by Geisler, second by Bradley. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, opposed? And motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission and decision will be made by the city council at the March 7th meeting. All right, then we have the planning case 23-4, the planned unit development. Presentation has already been given. We'll open a public hearing in that matter. Anyone wish to speak to this public hearing? Anyone wish to speak? Seeing none, we'll close that public hearing, limit comments to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler.
So, just a general comment to staff about, you know, the assisted living and the nature of this facility. You know, we talked about it a little bit in our work session. But, this kind of facility does bridge that commercial and housing space because it is a service where people live. It's kind of both. And so, I think the zoning conversation, it would be good for us to discuss, but the PUD is obviously the way to go about getting this done. So, I think that that's great, fine. I think that may be worthwhile for us to consider, especially, you know, given the other items in the current comp plan. And we know 2050 is looming and we'll have to look at that comp plan too. So, just considering those aspects of where do we want, what zones do we really think assisted living facilities should live in? Either as a conditional use or as an approved use or whatever. 'Cause I do think that they provide a level of, a service that is more commercial-like than just straight housing. So, just wanted to make that comment.
I have a couple of questions for the petitioner. If you could come up, please. And Mr. Kroll, if you could bring up the rendering of the backside of the.
This one?
No, the backside.
Oh, the backside, this one.
There you go.
Okay.
My first comment or question would be, is there any possibility that we could get an additional parapet or whatever you want to call it, to the right, that we would have three? To kind of break up that roof line a little more on the, what's the right side of this picture? picture?
Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I guess we could look at that. As you'll note, where those, where those dormers are, that's above, I think, an area within the common, so it's, it's a, it's a window section into the common area versus a window section into a private room. We could, we could definitely look at that. Obviously, adds some cost to the building, but it's, is a consideration that we could, we could make. I...
I'm just thinking it would break up that roof line a little bit more, make it a little more attractive, I think.
Yeah. Did the, did you see the drone aerial footage of the Savage? It was the Savage, Minnesota, Norbella. I think that was the link. It's always hard to tell from these, from these drawings. You know, I think in person, the buildings are quite attractive, and we've got numerous roof lines to break things up.
What direction does this particular one face? Is it...
That side would be facing the east.
Yeah, so the long...
It would be facing the townhomes, or the...
Twinhomes.
Twinhomes.
The long, the long leg of the L is against the eastern boundary.
That's a good shot, Dakota, from the drone there.
Yeah, so that, that's a video drone around, and that building, that building layout is the same as, as the footprint that we're proposing on this property. So you see how you've got the, you've got the two roof dormers, and then you, then you have the hip of the building, and it turns. So, you know, when you look at that portion of the structure, you know, is it, you know, the way it's designed, you can see that there's the dormers that correspond on the opposite side as well. Whereas if we put a third dormer on the exterior side of the elevation, you wouldn't be able to balance it on the interior side, because now that's the inside of the L. So just from an architectural standpoint, that's why you see two roof dormers and not three. And then, again, you're moving, you move past the roof dormers, and then you're at the corner of the building. Now you've got the patio, you've got the, you've got the dormers over the patio, and a lot of landscaping along that side as well. I think we've actually got more landscaping on our plan for the Coon Rapids proposed building along that elevation than is shown here. We've got more overstorey trees along that elevation. So, I'm not 100% opposed to it, but I think architecturally, I, I might get some resistance from our architects, because they like to have things balance, and the dormers balance on both sides of the building. There's also some breakup, too, on that, on that wall facade. You've got different depths where the windows are and in between the windows. So I do think it's an attractive building from that perspective.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
So, to look at the flat piece, that where we see just the two dormers, is altered when you look at this configuration of the whole building. When you make the turn, and you come up with those two roof elevations that are on the backside, that makes it a little more softening to the eye.
It is a little bit of an optical illusion there, because part of that on the far...
This looks very flat.
On the far right side of that picture, part of that building is already angled and turning away.
That's, and it has some roof elevation on the angle.
In 2D, it makes it look, I think, longer than it is in real, in real life, because part of that is turning away.
I understand that.
And you saw that on the, on the drone footage?
Mm-hmm, that made it more clear to me.
All right. I can, I can kind of go with your, your explanation on that. Another question I have, is there laundry facilities for the residents?
Yes. Yeah, you get a full host of services within the facility. They, full meal plan, they have commercial kitchen, so they're, they're fed. You know, the folks have full meal plan operators, and there's, there's a beauty salon, so people can get haircuts and have their hair done. There's full laundry service, all of, all of those types of services, for sure.
Is it the type of thing where they do their own laundry, or they turn in their clothing to have the laundry done?
I think the laundry is done by the staff for them. Again, most of these folks have some physical limitations, and so laundry isn't a chore that they're expected to do. We're looking to care for these folks. I mean, this is, this is really your 21st century nursing home. It really is.
They maybe can't navigate a full hallway, you know, to get to a laundry room, or I understand that. Because my mom was in a facility that she eventually turned her laundry over to them, because she couldn't do it anymore. Understand that.
All right, thank you. Commissioner, anyone else with comments, questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Heitler?
I like this. It's beautiful, and I hope, you know, I'll be happy to see it happen. My question, however, is, one gentleman is here to speak, and we've had sometimes a whole roomful of people speaking about much smaller proposals. And I'm wondering, did the whole neighborhood and everybody over there get noted on this?
Yeah, that's correct. We follow kind of our zoning code and state statute that any property within 350 feet of this proposal got a public notice letter, and then it's also posted in the Anoka Union Herald as well, notifying the public hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Geisler?
You know, I do echo a little bit of your concerns of the unrelieved sea of gray for the, for the shingles there. You know, I think about, the focal point is really tucked back in with that entryway, which is pretty far off the street. You know, that end gable that faces 125th, or 124th, excuse me, you know, doesn't reach all the way up to the peak, right? So there isn't a focal point right on the street. But, yeah, I mean, I understand your concerns of that. That third gable on that one side would continue to break that up, you know, and that, that end point also is, you've got, you've got more windows there, you've got, that is the memory care side, but the accent just doesn't, doesn't quite rise up to everything else. So there's really just the two that are just barely taller than the top of the, because they're 22 feet, I believe, you said, Dakota, versus 20 foot of the roof line?
Yeah, well, 22 feet nine inches, and then 24 feet at the...
Yeah, so about two feet, just a little bit over. So I think it meets the intent of what we're looking for, but it'd be nice to have something that really, really emphasized it. But, but I agree in general that, I love the design of the wall and the textures and the other pieces that are there. The aesthetics of the building are great, but, you know, the drone shot, the first thing I see is just a giant sea of gray. And that's unfortunate to see it that way, because it kind of does, does dim the beauty of the side of the building that you see where it's at. But, thank you.
Mr. Chair. I guess the only comment that I'll make is that I just feel like the landscape has compensated for that, to be quite honest. I mean, I think even in that area, you're going to have more than what we saw in the rendering, right? It's going to be more full and so forth. So I'm really not concerned about that. I agree that normally, we probably wouldn't, we want something more to kind of dress it up and so forth, or make it look more consistent. But I have no issue with it, especially with the landscaping that you guys are doing.
Anyone else have comments? Motions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Casey?
I will move in planning case 23-4 to recommend approval of the proposed planned unit development with the following five conditions that are listed in our packet.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Schmokey. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the motion carries. This is a recommendation by the planning commission, and a decision by the city council will be handled at their March 7th meeting. Good luck. All right, moving on to other business. Mr. Kroll?
Yeah, so for our March meeting, we have a proposal for a site plan for a Chase Bank facility in Riverdale Village. A applicant brought forward ordinance amendment related to indoor recreation in our regional shopping zoning district, and then a PUD amendment to Walzer Hyundai related to Lot 2 of their dealership.
All right. And Commissioner, anyone have anything for other business? All right, hearing none.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Casey, second by Knablock. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
May adjourn.